My name is Keith McIntyre, pastor of the Independent Baptist Church of Monizuma, and just appreciate the work of Park Without Reverse and their ability to connect people with government. And I believe that Christians need to be connected with government and be aware of what's taking place. We've come alongside them to help for a couple of months to get the town council and board meetings out. But would like to invite you, if you don't have a church home, to the Independent Baptist Church in Monizuma. Our services are Sunday morning at 10:30. We have adult Bible classes and children's classes at 9:30. If we could ever do anything for you, you can contact me at MIB.church. Thanks for watching.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you all for coming. We've got kind of a full agenda today, so we will get at that pretty quickly. Maybe a few things not on the agenda, but first we'll do our housekeeping things. We have minutes to approve from three weeks, July 1st, July 15th, and August 5th.
I have to, Dan was going on the 1st, July 1st, so I'll make a motion to reapprove the minutes of the July 1st, 2024 meeting.
And I would second that, all in favor say aye.
Aye. Bruce was going on the 15th, so I will make a motion to reapprove the minutes on July 15th.
And I will second that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then I was going on the 5th.
Yeah, so I'd make a motion to reapprove the minutes for August 5th, 2024.
And I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Was there two there or just one?
Is that the 15th?
Yeah, there'd be three.
Is that the 15th?
You were absent.
You're absent on this.
I'm absent, yeah. Guess some of our vacations are over.
No, I don't know if it's just Bruce.
Okay. All right.
It's our one hour.
No. All right, we have payroll in the amount, two payrolls, one amount of $265,801.48, and then the Union Hospital, $2,486.34.
And I'll make a motion to reapprove payroll in the amount of $265,801.48, and on the Union Hospital for $2,486.34.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
The 19th.
19th.
All right, then we have to acknowledge receipt of the payroll claims accounts payroll report, and that amount is $214,368.96.
And I'll make a motion to acknowledge receipt of the payroll claims, and the amount is $214,368.96.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye. All right. Did you have any out cycle question? Before we get into the regular new business, let's go real quickly to a couple of people out here, not on the agenda, to get that taken care of, and then we'll get back on the agenda. Celia, what you got?
We've come with what we hope will be a helpful suggestion with the traffic in Bridgeton during the Bridge Festival, that we change the direction of the traffic on volunteer way so that the traffic stays to the right and loops around. We feel it would be safer for all. And I've come with my brother, he wishes to address the issue as well.
That's the same problem, and especially with the traffic that comes in on Bridgeton. There, the first Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, there, the traffic gets lined up, clear up the Bridgeton-Rockville Road and past our farm, and any way to get traffic off quicker into the parking lots, that would open up the parking lot there by the covered bridge and down below as an entrance to get them off the road quicker.
Now they go across it, come back around the right and back out. Now you just talk about going straight right and come back the other way.
Right, and then go out the other way. That way you're on the opposite side of the traffic whenever you leave too.
Stay the right, see what makes sense with it, right?
Well, I don't know. The only reason I say that, the last, when we had the meeting, the reason it was decided to go the other direction was because there is six entrance lanes in on the other side. You've got three lanes wide at Kelly Hawkins parking lot through at least two, if not three, Crane's parking lot. So the reason they originally decided to do that, they could, thought they could flow more traffic over if it's just that single road coming in, I don't know how much quicker it's going to back up.
Well, it fills the other side quicker and...
Yeah, but we're...
They already said that it's hurt their parking too. So, I mean, definitely getting more people off quicker to the right would be much better than going to have the menagerie going on, because they will be turning anyway. So it's just a percentage of them's going to get off before they ever get up to that far.
Do you have a meeting?
Felt it would be a more natural traffic flow more.
Which I understand exactly what you're saying. I think probably the best thing to do before we make a decision on it is, we've been thinking about, I've talked to Mr. Fraser about, we've been thinking about just having a meeting of why don't we just set a time and get in contact with BCBA and all the owners and just have a meeting and hash it out and see what actually everybody's opinion is on what they do think it'd be. And the main reason it wasn't to cross the flow of traffic, the reason they'd done it, they just thought they could get. And I know Kelly was having some issues last year with them, holding people up and looking for a parking place instead of kicking them off and sending them all down the road to the next.
I understand, and BCBA would be more than happy to meet.
Okay. Which I will, I could get with you one evening, and I'll have to get with the other parking lot owners, it's not a part of BCBA, and we can have a meeting, discuss it, hash it out, and figure out what is the best route for everybody.
Okay, BCBA's having a meeting tomorrow night, if I could let them know that.
Tomorrow night, I know we're not working for them, but I, it may be better off to have some type of a special meeting if you think we'd get everybody. When's your next meeting?
The next meeting won't be till September.
Okay, let me get in touch with you here, and we'll see what we can work out.
Okay.
So I'll just holler at you, and then as soon as we make that decision, I know, once everybody decides what is going to be the best, Bruce and I, I'm sure Jim probably won't have a problem, but it's going to be more up to what you guys decide, as long as it, I mean, it's been a bottleneck. I seen it all the way to rough and ready crossroads before.
It's a problem.
It's, it is. But it's been that way, but even before we closed the road, there's been a bottleneck, because people having trouble deciding where they're going, and getting through town, it's been a mess before, so.
I understand.
Yeah, I can get with you by the weekend. I will get with you before the weekend, and you know, I can set something up. So it's your meeting, talk to them and see what most of them have available in the next week and after weeks.
Glad to do it.
Thank you, Celia.
Thanks for coming. Okay. All right, Matt Steckley. You remember Matt Swiffer, Core Facilities, did the jail project and all that?
It came off, actually.
All right.
So, thought I'd swing by, give you guys an update on a few things. Here is the latest, final, as is financials. So originally, this is a two-year project, originally architects got involved and said million and a half to a million, dug deeper and went to repair. EFS found out the cause of the issue, the stormwater. So EFS is done, Suffolk's done, gutters done, paint's done, all the repairs are done. All that's left is the excavation plumbing part with stormwater runoff and kind of the elevation changes. Right now, just I think the building's settling, everything's kind of sloped towards the building in certain areas, so we had standing water and the EFS the next year was just sucking it up. So everything's ordered on the final piece. We should have two to three weeks lead time for some of these special boxes that are going to go underground, but this project is just about racked up. So the top half of this document was the original project budget, and then underneath adjusted. So you could see I redlined actually where we're at, all said and done. So a very nice reduction, a giant million dollar cost save overall, cost avoidance, not going with all new exterior.
Are you telling me we're on time and under budget?
We're on time and under budget, yes, sir. The, I, this is probably a, one of the longer projects, this really should have been bam, bam, bam.
Well, that was beyond your control, I mean, even then, we were trying to get to site.
There was a lot, and then even getting going. EFS took longer, and then the, the channel had to be replaced, and then we found the rotted paneling, and so it's just kind of been piece by piece. But I don't know if any of you saw it, I want to thank the sheriff and his team, jail commander, and everyone here, just so wonderful to work with, and really appreciate the sheriff updating the public. I saw a Facebook post where he posted it, the paint scheme him and his team picked out, it really looks, it looks fantastic.
Yeah, I thought it looked real nice, too.
So, yeah, we're on the backend here with drain tile and then some landscaping to beautify it, but we're there, so just wanted to give you guys a complete update.
And you have another.
And then the other issue, I'm just going to kind of pass my phone around really quick, just so you guys could see. Sheriff, correct me if I'm wrong, so what you're looking at is a copper fitting from the jail. We're at, right now, six to eight, I think it's safe to say, six to eight leaks throughout the building, in certain hallways, in certain areas of the building. So we have a copper pipe that you could see here is at the end of its life cycle, and we've got leak springing. And then the other issue that's coming up is the shut offs are shot as well. So when you go to isolate the water to make a repair, where, yeah, so now it's turned, turning into no laundry, no food, no kitchen for a 24/7 critical facility. So this came up while I was there anyways, it seemed, talked to jail commander Eddie, he seemed to say this is definitely getting worse. It's, I brought this to you guys as a board, and in addition to my update today on the financials.
That doesn't matter, but how old facility, what is it doing?
Are we 23, 24 years?
26 years.
26 years, so, yeah. And normally with copper, you should get that, but I think just any jail statewide, all the jails on end, they're beat up, they're beat up real bad, and that they're heavily used. So I wanted to put this on your guys' radar, there's, there's another project, actually, your highway garage has, the roof has passed its life cycle. I won't get into the quotes, especially if we go out to bid, but, but the number was pretty high, and it was for a Band-Aid, it was for an overlay, not a new roof. So I pretty much wanted to say, I'm here, if you guys want to see something from me to run with a full RFP for the all-new jail, shut offs and copper piping, that would have to be done in phases, that really would need a lot of hands on deck in phases to make sure what's being done, when, and the jail's aware of it. And then at the same time, if I'm here anyways, if you guys wanted me to support you in at least hard bidding, both a new roof and a Band-Aid, but even the Band-Aid was pretty pricey, where I would think you guys would want eyes on it or additional quotes.
Yeah, let's do that.
So on one hand, I'd ask you for, I'm going to ask you for the business, I can get you in agreement, but there, there's two projects that are on your lap, no matter what.
What would it cost us to have you do the roof, for example, get the bids proposal, whether we take them or not?
So I, I think, let me put an agreement together for both, just literally turnkey, like it, we're year six with you guys, I would, I would take care of, I mean, as a sheer thank you, my, my numbers itself are not going to scare anyone, but let me just put some together, I'll get it to you guys, and maybe at a future meeting if you guys want to approve or discuss it.
Yeah.
But I'm not one to quit to throw all numbers on the spot, forgive me.
I'd make the motion that we authorize Maggiore to put a package together on the roof replacement for the highway department, as well as via copper piping replacement in the jail.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
All right.
Okay, you're on the way.
Got a bar for the money, mister?
Good job.
Thanks, man.
Endless.
Sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, man.
Yeah, definitely.
All right, let me check real quickly before I move on to regular agenda stuff. If I don't put this stuff in my phone, I won't remember. All right, we just need to approve with the new world that we're living in, now the digitized world that we're living in, we have a couple of things that we need to do to bring this up to speed with the rest of the world. One, one of those would be to have all the ordinances and resolutions that we passed codified, and there's companies that do that codification stuff. So the council is suggesting also that we get that accomplished, and they are willing to fund what the cost to get it done. So I make the motion that we move ahead and I get bids from company to codify all that material.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye. The second is getting our minutes digitized, they're pretty much searchable now. In fact, Susan's just found some stuff for us concerning a LE screen with Fair Board from 2016, but still you got to manually go through all the minutes of all the meetings for all the years to try to find anything. There's been some nightmare things that go back 20 years looking for something, so the world as it is, now those can all be entered, just get, hire a company to do the data entry, put all the minutes to digitize, and then all those things are credible, then they're all searchable, you just punch them where you're looking for, and they come up. So I would also, and the council is okay with that too, so I'd also make the motion, and then we begin the process of seeking companies to digitize our minutes.
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye. All right. I have yet to, but I'm going to talk with the labor board. We had a situation come up where we had a, the new highway superintendent, his son was eager to work, he's a CDL, we have no applicants, we had no CDL applicants, and we were looking to hire him upon the advice of our attorney, and I agree with that advice, as long as he was not, the nepotism law says as long as you're not a direct supervisor. The other two additional things that are included in our anti-nepotism handbook is you cannot, can't control the salary, which he does not, council controls salary, our department has no say over your own salary, and, and/or promotions, and there are no promotions at the highway department, you're hired, so in my mind, he's okay to hire so long as, and we did that already, we approved the road form some time ago.
Yes.
And he would be the direct supervisor. Our HR, Susan was uncomfortable with that, Roy was uncomfortable with that, council, another, was uncomfortable, so we terminated that for now, but I intend to follow up with the labor department, see if that is acceptable, thing, if it is, then we'll go back that path and revisit that. Those are only three stipulations, for direct supervision, salary control, and promotions. Evaluation is one of those, but evaluation would fall under the road form as well, who's in charge.
Case law and that out of Southport, Indiana, that directly addresses that issue.
Oh, super, and it was okay to do, perfect.
That's, I had to research it, unless they've overturned that case law in the last year and a half, it's...
Good to go.
It was in regards to the police department out of Southport.
Okay.
So that's where my information is.
Okay, and I understand the concern, I appreciate the concern, they're just doing their job, so I appreciate that. But since they don't control salary, they don't control promotions, and we don't control the evaluations, that'd be under the road form, then I think we're okay, and you got case law, so that is okay.
Well, and I hadn't, when I was talking to you, I hadn't looked in our handbook, that's why I referred you to the handbook.
So you're still comfortable that it's okay to do that, I'll let him know that then, okay. We have had contact with the Fair Board about a couple of issues, one about getting the 4H buildings on our county insurance instead of the Fair Board insurance, which I'm amazed it wasn't before, but those are things that you don't ever think about until it comes up, and why wasn't it? But the issue now is who actually owns the building, that was the holdup with MGS Insurance, but Nick just informed us, even if the Fair Board does own those, the county could lease them from them, by paying that lease a year, then we'd include them under our insurance to save the money that they're paying for insurance now.
I would assume your insurance company would be willing to do that, I mean, that's a pretty standard thing, if we're leasing it, where they're going to cover us, I mean, obviously they might bill us more for that.
I'll find out when the Fair Board meets, and then we'll, we'll begin that process and find, trying to figure out who actually owns them. The tax records show that it was, the people of record are the Park County Fair, 4H, Park County 4H Building and Grounds Association. Bruce doesn't think that exists anymore, thinks those boards rolled into one, so we don't know if that entity just went away, or if that entity assumed all the obligations of the other, don't know what happened with that, we just need to find out.
Because you're going to have to be able to prove somebody has authority to do something there. So my hope is that there's minutes or there's something that they've done that's shown it assuming the other.
Okay, and the only other thing I have on this is what we're getting ready to talk about in a moment anyway, so let's just go ahead and do it first. Jason, you're okay, you going to stick around for a little while yet? Let's go ahead and do the 4H. We were asked about the Fair Board requested, would like to serve alcohol at like tractor pull, truck pull, those types of events, and the question was whether that's acceptable or not. In 16, was it we passed that?
Yes.
We, we allowed, because typically alcohol's not permitted on any county property function, certainly not going to be allowed at any 4H function, or any function actually that the youth is involved, because the state law does not allow that. We allowed it to, in the commercial building for weddings and banquets, that type of thing, so long as the state requirements of having a licensed bartender, or a licensed caterer, a licensed caterer can serve, so long as they are a licensed caterer. So the, the way it was presented to me was the attitude that they leased the property from us so they can do whatever they want out at the Fair Board, which is just, I mean, that's just silly, that's not the case at all. There is no, if you lease a building, doesn't mean you can do whatever you want to do with that building, you're going to have some stipulations, but it needs to be in the lease as such. So the agreement that we agreed to, and let me read this for all of you, so we know where we are. My concern with it was, I'm certainly not anti-alcohol, my wife and I go out for dinner, we'll have a drink. I'm concerned about the stigma of, if we get to the point that every social function has to have alcohol associated with it, I think that's a tough lesson to spread as well. But, that being said, I don't expect anyone to live their life based upon how I think life should be lived, so I'm just one person and not one vote in that situation. So we were researching that, and Dan, actually Susan, I think, found what we actually approved back in 2016, and here's what it says. In fact, this was presented to us by the Fair Board, and we approved it. It's a policy of the alcohol and beverage policy at the Park County Fairgrounds, I'll read this slowly, so you can stay with it, it's not very long. Here's what we, what the policy that they presented to us and that we approved says, wedding receptions, banquets, and non-youth oriented programs will be allowed to serve alcoholic beverages only if a licensed caterer serves the beverages and agrees to accept responsibility for ensuring adherence to all federal, state, and local laws. So again, wedding receptions, banquets, and non-youth oriented program. In this case, truck pulls, tractor pulls, those are not youth programs, they're, they're programs being held. A caterer is not an individual that works as a bartender or has a server's license. The caterer's name and address must be on the application, and alcohol must be served in conjunction with food. There will be an additional $500 deposit on top of the existing building rental deposit when alcoholic beverages are going to be served. Any damage or excessive cleaning will result in forfeiture of both deposits and additional charges if needed. An off-duty of Park County police officer must be hired for the duration of the event. No smoking is allowed in any of our rental buildings at any time. So that's the policy that we agreed to. The state law, the state of Indiana has recently allowed beer and wine to be served at one-time events if a temporary beer or wine permit is filled out and filled with the local excise office. Liquor cannot be served with this permit, and it cannot be in conjunction with any youth activities. The fairgrounds must have a copy of this permit, and it can only be used during the temporary function. All servers must be licensed, permanifications can be obtained online at the Indiana Alcohol Tobacco Commission. So beer and wine with that temporary license can be served, liquor, no. So Dan had made the motion to accept the Fair Board policy, and, and it was unanimously passed by Bruce and I as well. So that is where we are, so my understanding, and our understanding, is since it is a non-youth one-time program that they can serve according to our policy that we adopt, the policy we adopted, that they can serve, sell beer and wine.
I don't, Nick and I discussed and talked about cleaning that up, because actually I don't think that event is even going to go on now, but it could not have been done anyway, because children who are down to 12 was involved in the one in question.
Okay.
And it's involving children.
The question would be, non-youth oriented, was it planned as a youth program, was it was planned as an adult program, children just come, so we need to...
No, it's, there was participating children in the event, but they're not having it now anyway, so you wait till next year.
We need to clean that up and figure that out.
But Nick said he would clean it up, because I think during the fair, they don't have any alcohol at any time.
No, 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 no 4H, no 4H things at all.
That event was actually supposed to take place during the fair, and it had a rain out, so they rescheduled it, and that's when the alcohol thing, but right now it's not a big issue other than Nick getting it cleaned up before something else happens.
I think we need to see the lease agreement or send them.
Okay. Once we decide who owns what and liability things.
Would you mind sending a letter to the Fair Board, did that affect that we see the lease that you're talking about?
I can do, we know contact info for...
Then you get an extension off.
I'll give you some.
Okay, all right, yeah, no, I can do that.
So I'll send you some information.
But, yeah, I'd like to see their lease.
Let's try to get that, get that going, so we get that figured out, so we don't have to have a discussion every time about what's up and what's not up.
The other thing they need to be aware of, the ATF has new policies on public consumption of alcohol and things like that too, so we'll want to look at that too.
Okay.
And they passed some new legislation.
See, I think we need to clean it up and just kind of revisit a thing, because I think, I think our intent back in 2016 was to help the Fair Board compete with...
Wedding venues.
Yeah, other wedding venues, okay?
That's exactly what it was.
I don't think we ever had an intention that this was going to be a...
Beer and wine at every event.
Yeah, just a carte blanche, okay, to serve beer and wine and everything, okay? I think we were just trying to help the Fair Board be able to rent the building instead of losing it to a wedding to somebody who can't.
And what's popular on that, trigger run now, trigger run in now allows alcohol, unless you have licensed bartender and you have security in their building, in their place.
But you are correct, when they come to us, there was, the 4H building was not getting rented out for wedding venues or...
Yeah, because it could serve out.
Receptions, because again, and that's basically how this started, and now it's kind of brushed around.
And the difference is, that's a private event, but you know who's coming, as opposed to a public event, and anybody could show up, so we just got to codify it, we got to figure out where we want to go with that.
We need to figure out where we want to go with Nick and let him clean it up.
Yep. I'm glad you came today, we had lots of y'all.
I'm occasionally useful.
Well, we haven't seen that yet, but you got time now. Good luck on that, counting on you.
Realize when you codify all those ordinances, I have to know exactly how many ordinances I wrote.
All right, we'll go back to the agenda then, I don't think there's any others I invited that I didn't put on the agenda, if yours was on the agenda. All right, Mr. Fraser, you're up. All right, Mr. Fraser, you're up.
Sent out the Victus food contract for you guys to review. We're switching for the inmate meals. It's supposed to save us around thirty thousand dollars if we follow their program. So I just need your, your vote on that, I guess.
Have you had time to review that?
Did you hear that?
Yeah.
I heard the question, I answered the answer.
There's just a couple of things to know. It's an original three-year contract. It has the auto renewal language, which says you have to cancel the days prior to the expiration of any term. It does have language in there, says it's governed by the Commonwealth of Kentucky. And any litigation would have to be instigated in Kentucky. So you just need to be aware that if you end up in a lawsuit on this, that you're gonna have to hire outside counsel in the state of Kentucky.
We can't just rent you a motel.
I don't want to be licensed in the state of Kentucky.
The good thing is it has a thirty-day out, so if we don't like it, if not save us money, we can just get out from under.
So it's thirty-day out, not just thirty-day notice before the termination, thirty-day anytime?
There is a section in here that says that except under the previous section or excuse performance, that thirty days' notice to either party can be given, yes.
Okay, great. All right.
I have one more thing. I don't know if we're gonna wait till later.
No, 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 go ahead.
I need permission to sell two cars. We bought two new Tahos, and so we're trading. We were gonna trade them in, but we think we'll get more money selling them on our up deals website. So there'll be two thousand fourteen Ford Taurus.
Go slow, we're just gonna see you write it down in minutes, cause we gotta have the right numbers there.
Two thousand fourteen Ford Taurus, the last four of the van are five eight seven five. And then there's one more. Ready?
Yep.
Two thousand fourteen Chevy Tahoe. The last four, eight, six, nine, three on the van number.
All right.
So we're just gonna list those, sell them, and then use that money towards our vehicles and equipment.
Did you get the Explorer sold?
Uh, no, we're gonna sell it this week.
Okay.
And I don't know how this works with councils. Sometimes, are those vehicles owned by the Sheriff's Department or?
We bought the Tahoe out of commissary, so I understand the money goes back to commissary.
Okay, that's why I went, that's where I.
Of course, I'd get permission wherever it goes.
Right, and the other one?
The other one, I think we just bought out of budget. It was bought a long time ago.
Well, they have to go back to generals, what I'm getting at?
Yeah, potentially.
They'll, they'll reappropriate that for you probably, but the step will have to be go back to general, and they'll reappropriate that to you.
Since I'm doing that, instead of trading them in, maybe they, you can let me have a.
They'll have to be involved with that, yeah, cause all those sales of those types of things have to go back to general.
Right.
Okay, I just didn't why you think that it would come to you and then you would spend on something.
Right.
You'll get it, you'll get it. You just gotta go through that process and go back to the council. I'd make the motion, will you approve the Sheriff's Department to sell those two vehicles as listed?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Okay, anything else?
That's it, thank you.
We need to approve.
Yeah, titles with you.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay. The food contract, we need to approve that.
Yeah.
You have a copy?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, we approve the food contract for the jail with Victus Food Service.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you, appreciate it. How are things? Peaceful?
Great.
Okay. What's the, what's the setup, whatever word it is, meth labs, are they getting worse, less, same?
No meth labs, not many people are making it anymore.
Okay.
It's cheap enough to buy it straight from Mexico, so no sense to make your own. I hear that might change because of the fentanyl.
Have we had any?
It's safer, they think it's safer to make it.
Okay.
They're playing work out there though.
Have you had any fentanyl shop in the county?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, appreciate you, thanks.
Thanks.
All right, we already did the alcohol and beverage policy, we're looking into that, and next will be the copier replacement bid.
We had this last meeting, it would be tabled, because Mary Ann was gonna do some research. She needed to contact them on some stuff. Nick needed to look at some stuff.
I, I've read it. The only thing I really, I mean, there's some things to point out, but the thing she was gonna look at was this interest rate they have on the first page.
Yes.
And I, I mean, I've read the whole thing. I still don't understand what the relation to that is on anything, but.
Connie will be able to speak to that.
I have sent you an email with the information on that interest rate, and I got with Charles Bates from Rico, and he said that that is, that needs to be in there, but if you look underneath it, it shows that we're tax exempt.
Right, I mean, that was my question. When did you send the email? I don't remember seeing it.
Um, last Friday.
Okay, got it, okay.
Go ahead, take time, you'll look at it.
Okay, that's what I thought that they were possibly doing, cause I did see the tax exempt card in there, but I just didn't want to sign some, some.
It looked like a loan agreement, but you paid so much in interest, and we were.
I was wondering if we were, that was late payment or what that was, interest rate was for?
The explanation in the email is sufficient for me.
So you're okay with that then? So you're okay with the contract?
Yeah.
Okay, you guys have any questions? Or a motion that's approved?
I'd make a motion, we approve the contract with Rico for the copier replacement.
I'll second that, I'm sorry.
All in favor, say aye.
All right.
It's got auto renewal language in it also.
I think there's one signature on all of them, I think.
Sorry, my arms are short.
It's got that standard auto renewal language in it.
Okay, and you're okay with it as it is?
Yeah, and then they have the net thirty payment terms, so we just want to make sure we pay it timely, so we don't have like late fees or anything.
All right. It's got two signatures here. Is that me up here?
I honestly do not.
I couldn't read that, but the second, the second line, I couldn't read it, so you can hold it over here for you.
So, okay. Well, now there's actually three, so each one, and you can sign it.
Okay.
There's just one place for a title, but two other signatures.
Yeah, that's when I looked in there, I seen this blank for a signature, but I didn't get through.
Okay, ready, yeah.
No, it's fine. They're sticking it on it.
Yeah, they've got three on this. This one is back to one of the engines. And that one, so one. And this one is three. What was today's?
My team.
Can this get sent to insurance? No, it was just on the backside.
Probably get the insurance company notice of the shit.
No, I just got that today, so I wasn't sure.
Yeah, we need to send it to insurance.
Okay, I'll scan it.
So they can appoint counsel.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what, anytime we get a notice, that's the first thing we'll want to do.
Okay.
Send it to the insurance.
Okay.
Page, got it on the back page.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Katie Lightyear Day, Rico, no, Mr. Moody.
Sure.
What you got?
Wonder, by an update, might be noticeable, we haven't got any chip and seal yet this year, and it's because of problems with equipment, and equipment needed couldn't be rented. We couldn't find it. I know that my predecessor had planned to purchase one before he stepped down. Montgomery County has stepped up and offered to loan us one, and we're required to have proof of insurance, and then a signed agreement, which they asked of the commissioners. So I met with them this morning, had a great meeting, so the update is that chip and seal will start soon, perhaps next week. And once we start, we just plan on continuing without pause.
Are they gonna send an agreement for us to sign?
Yes.
Okay, are they gonna send that to you?
Yes.
Okay, just let me know when you get that, and I'll come pick that up and get it to the courthouse.
Yeah.
We can do, we can vote on approving that now, and then we can sign that agreement when it comes.
Yeah, I need the agreement for five dollars or something of that nature.
Okay, I'd make the motion that we enter into agreement with Montgomery County to use their chip and seal.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
All right.
So when you get it, I'll, okay, let me add to that then. I also make a motion, authorize me to sign on our behalf once that agreement is in hand and approved by Nick.
And I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
All right.
So once you get it, I'll come pick it up, get it to Nick, let him look at it real quick, and then we'll, I'll sign it, then we're good to go.
Great.
But you go ahead and act on the assumption that we're gonna be okay, so we'll get that document. Okay, what else you got?
I'm speaking about chip and seal. The list of roads to chip and seal was made by our attorney previously. It was used with material like our ninety-eight oil. We want to use what's called NDS. It's an improved product. It's used by all state counties. Well, I understand Park County used it before. I don't even know that, that, I don't know, perhaps I already have the authority to go ahead with that, but it is a ten percent increase in cost, and even if it resulted in ten percent less road, I think it's a better value for Park County. And the reason I bring it to you is just because it was a plan already placed, this chip and seal program for this season.
Sure.
So I didn't want to make changes to that plan without just getting a nod or thumbs up or.
If you folks don't know, Luke here is our new highway superintendent, and of course, he's living this year on the budget that was done before he ever got here. Randy retired midsummer, had some health issues, and was planning on retiring anyway, and just upped that a little early. So Nick, Luke's mission here is to try to continue with the work that Randy had planned, and to do that within the constraints of the budget, but he also understands there's some things that he can't do until his own budget's approved by the council. Although the council's being very, very good to work with as far as any additional appropriations. We have purchased some new equipment. We are doing some things in new ways, and that is our hope, that we will do a better job. The Highway Department has done wonders to me, it's done wonders over the years, but there are new ways of doing things, and new materials like this NDS as opposed to straight ninety-eight. So we're trying to help Luke all we can with, to supply things that he needs to get the job done the way he wants to get that done. Okay, didn't want to interrupt you, but I knew the folks didn't know who you were, so. You're used to seeing Randy for the last forty-six years, so.
Of course.
You said ten percent. What are you talking total dollars?
I don't have those numbers. I sure probably have them with me today, but, and that's a rough number, didn't say it might be twelve percent or eight percent.
Have you talked to anyone about the advantage you're using it as opposed to the other?
Yes, I've talked to Tom Martin a lot.
That's why I was getting ready to ask if he talks to Tom, okay?
I've talked to other counties. I've talked to Lake County, I've talked to Montgomery County.
That's the way to go.
Yes.
Okay, then that's good enough for me, if they'll pay for you guys.
Yeah, I don't have a problem. It's within your budget, and we can come up with the money.
Yeah, now, let me ask you this, if we stay inside the budget, maybe a little less road gets done. I strongly believe it's still a better value for the government.
And I would like to know what it would take to get the additional, all the road that you had planned on doing, let us know that. We still have some.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think if we can get them done with the extra cost, we still want to get them done. But I, I think one thing you need to do though is if we can't, if we can't make the numbers work, and you can't do some roads that were promised to be done this year, they need to be put at the very first for next year.
Absolutely.
And if folks live on those roads, you need to know that that's what happens.
Yes, while, I'll press numbers and present my thoughts.
But hopefully we could go ahead with the extra cost and still be able to do all the roads that Randy had planned to do.
He's had trouble getting budget numbers on a regular basis and those types of things, and so really didn't know, or stone, but I understand that you were, that the stone budget is gone, so we have to find places to fund, fund your stone needs as well. So we just need to know what those ongoing needs are, so we can address those for you.
Appreciate it.
We don't want to tie your hands. The unfortunate part here for Luke is Luke was with the Army fourteen years. He did this type of thing with them, with the Corps of Engineers, he was a Corps of Engineer, but with them for years. Luke, working through the Army, budgets were never a problem before. If you need something, you go get it, and just send the bill, somebody's gonna pay for that. Well, now he's living within the constraints of a budgeted entity, and finding it a struggle sometimes that he just can't do, can't go buy that piece of equipment just cause he can do more work with it. It's a, it's a process, but you're learning, you'll get there.
Yes, especially in wartime, they just, oh, what do you need?
Whatever you need, throw it in there, yeah, go get it, yeah. Luke said he never in his lifetime of work had to worry about fuel costs. I mean, he just get the fuel tank, and you go on. You don't have to budget for fuel costs. Well, you gotta budget fuel costs, so.
Oh, yeah.
Let me give you a couple of examples of why he's done some wonderful things, and I have absolute support in him. I don't know him from anybody. I just from his resume, his talking, and then we spent quite a bit of time talking about issues as we go along. But, for example, we lease equipment, and we typically, we work four days a week, ten-hour days. The number of hours on our lease, we're given so many thousand hours, say, on a piece of equipment in that lease period. Well, because we're only working those four, four days, and not that piece of equipment running all the time, we have additional hours sitting on that vehicle that we were gonna have to turn back in and never make use of. So he has talked to some of those guys, and has some of the guys who are willing to come in on Fridays and work. And so he's worked their schedule around, so that piece of equipment, even though the workers aren't working any more hours, that these guys are now working Tuesday through Friday instead of Monday through Thursday, and that way that piece of equipment's staying on the road and working all the time, and I think that's a great idea, so you did well.
Yeah, free piece of equipment, you get about twenty percent more productivity every week.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else you need from?
Yes, one more thing, seek some clarification on using comp time. I've used it before when having a small budget, it really helps using comp time. I know that there's some guidelines in how we use comp time, and I think that might even be from a federal level. I've even had one employee that was overpaid because my comp time was overturned after pressing up Christopher Payroll. I see other counties using comp time, and.
I'll have to check with Roy and John, and anyone else who I know, and Susan will know too. We had a discussion last year. Susan might not even been here before we had that conversation. My attitude on comp time, I don't like comp time. I'd rather the workers get paid for it every time. You put in the time, they get paid for it, and it's all clean and gone. The only reason I say that is we don't have a good policy with comp time. Most of those counties around us, and I've checked into this, most of those counties that have comp time require that that comp time be used within a thirty to forty-five day period. We didn't, and ours built up, and we would have guys like Randy had.
God, he's got a lot of hours.
Hundreds and hundreds of hours of comp time, which he shouldn't even be able to get anyway, because he's a salaried employee. But if it was above and beyond the expectation of a salaried employee, then the state will allow you to get comp time. So if Randy was working sixty hours a week, you expect that outside, and this way it is, and then you have weeks where you work thirty hours a week. You work your time out. But he was working full-time anyway. Randy never took days off, never missed days, and so, and as compensation for that, he got comp time. And those hours really build up, and the county had to pay thousands of dollars to buy those, buy those hours back. So we need to have that conversation again. I know we had that with the council. I was of the opinion that we came to an opinion, we weren't going to do comp time anymore, but I think we're on that. Is that what we came up with?
I thought so.
I thought so too, that we weren't gonna offer comp time. We're gonna offer time and a half, overtime pay. If you want to work, work. We need to check your budget, make sure where you are again on that, cause I know, again, that was an issue with you before. You had workers in the Army, you needed to work, you worked today, that's all there is to it. Let me check on that, what those two guys feel like, and not, not to ignore the other council members, but I know that those two would know what our conversation was. Their recollection may not be any better than mine. Do you have any recollection of that conversation that we had?
That was before my time.
I thought it was, yeah.
But there is no tracking system that you can keep that the Department of Labor would agree. It takes one disgruntled employee for a huge lawsuit.
Okay, we'll, we'll work that out. Let me talk to them, I'll talk to Susan, I'll talk to them, find out where we are. My preference would be not use comp time, just. unless we have a really short use, use period, maybe thirty days after we put in thirty days, you have to clean the slate and get back to where it is. Otherwise, you can't depend on anybody because they could just not come in today.
Well, the problem you also have with comp time is a limited amount of employees. If they are actually using their comp time, you're dealing without a workforce.
That's what I'm saying there, we couldn't plan jobs, but they may not come in today because they're using their comp time on that, so.
That's why Rockville switched back off of it to time and a half is because of that.
That's good, I like it. That's, that'd be my preference.
And then they bought out a bunch of comp time too to be able to switch back.
Good.
I would like to caveat a little bit that, uh, just so you guys, to clear the air. Myself, uh, sometimes put in sixty hours a week and I do not record, uh, those hours in that aspect. I do not, I'm a salaried employee and I do not, my personal belief is that I should not get comp time.
But let me tell you mine real quick, then you go on, I don't wanna keep interrupting you, but...
Yeah, you're fine.
I know, I knew you, I mean, I know you were out Saturday working on that road that we looked at on Friday and, uh, and I appreciate that effort. I know that you would put in a hundred hours a week if that's what you thought the job took. I can't speak for these two guys, but for me, I expect out of you forty hour week like everybody else. I understand if it takes sixty hours to get your job done, you're a salaried employee, you don't get additional pay. I hope that you will structure yourself, that if you put sixty hours in one week, you work that time, you get that time back by time off at, at, at your own speed. I, I wanna leave it to you, but I don't wanna abuse you and I don't want you to allow me to abuse. I know that the department's in disarray right now because of the change and you've got a lot of people that are, that are really working great with you and some that aren't working very well with you and you have to put in a lot of time. But I don't want you killing yourself trying to do everybody's job. I want you to do your job and, uh, and half again's okay for me, even when you have more than your job, that's okay. But I don't want you to be crazy with it, 'cause I know you will, I know you'll work yourself to death. And so, uh, I appreciate your efforts, but, but you can't do it all in one day.
I live in bed Friday night knowing that the kids camp is down there.
Yeah. What he's talking about is, we were looking at roads the other day, we went to look at the Wapalo Road, take FCA Camp Road to get there. And, uh, where we repaired that road a couple of years ago, um, it was in bad shape again and there was a huge hump in the soft, um, blacktop and they've been pounded and pounded and now there's this big hump, just a big hump in the road. And, and some kid hit that and you hit, hit that hard enough, it's just a straight drop ball down the right-hand side. So somebody's waiting to get hurt, so. We went to, uh, look at Wapalo, came back, he looked at that and he went, uh, had some guys come in and they went back Saturday. And, uh, and they, uh, they fixed that. He, uh, enlisted some help from, uh, from Judy and Sam Brooke. Uh, he needed, uh, Sam with the tractor to do something, which saved him a couple hours, yeah, see him, yeah. So he, uh, he got that, uh, that taken care of and accomplished and I appreciate that. But I don't know what you're thinking, we expect that, we expect you to put in your regular hours and if you have to do a little extra, you do a little extra. But other than that, you need to get that time back.
Great.
But I'd be fair to assume now that we're not doing comp time, we tell otherwise, notify?
I would say so, but...
I think that's what we...
I, I thought, I thought we did.
I thought we did do away with it, I was pretty sure, but...
Okay.
Has the handbook been updated since?
Anything changes, please let me know.
I can't tell you, well, I will, I'll check. But that's why, we, we just want people, 'cause the tracking is impossible and it was building up, there was no use time. And I just want guys to, if they work, they're paid and going down the road.
Yeah, I appreciate Susan, I didn't, I didn't know that aspect, uh, uh, tracking and, and things. Nope, I respect everyone here says and until further notice.
We're also not used to having a, a real HR person doing HR stuff, so I appreciate her. She's doing her job, I appreciate that.
Of course. Yeah. See what else, uh... Oh, just quick update real quick, just so you guys know, uh, seven seventy-five, we're ready for, uh, they can cross the, the, for milestone, come do that pavement. Um, I'm bugging them every week to get on the schedule. Um, we're winding down the drainage project down there and it will be shipped, uh, shipping over to eight hundred south.
Okay.
Um, that's where, uh, seven seventy-five with the drainage, as we're, I think you gotta start seeing some really good results.
I do have one to ask you to go check on. I have not made the trip yet, I was gonna do it tonight, but I can't tonight, but I mean, I can't do it later, but I got a message. Let me find, uh, from a guy who used to live in the county. He lives on twelve hundred now, so he's actually in another county, but the guy has this road with his dump truck every day. And it's off seven twenty, I think it's on twelve hundred, but let me, let me measure it for you. I don't wanna send it wrong. Alright. Um, southeast county line, uh, twelve hundred east between seven twenty and Coldloaf Road. We need to take a look at that and see if that's something we need to do quickly or are, are you already familiar with it?
It's a brush issue, right?
Uh, he's talking about how rough the road is. He said, uh, just imagine living on this road while I drive down it every morning in my empty dump truck, you get to US forty at four, five AM. Says, I go as easy as I can, but they still have to hate me. I know no longer, I'm no longer a Park County resident, but I know a lot of people on this road and, uh, but it's, uh, it's in terrible condition. So if you would look at that and see.
Yeah, um, so, well, it's a terrible condition. That one there and an, an empty dump truck, I can relate.
Yes.
So, um, what we're doing now is passing and you can see that on that road we did Saturday morning. That pass before did not hold because we're using pea gravel.
Right.
We were using it because it was cheaper to use and I, and I get it. Um, we're using triple wash elevens now and you can already see how it...
We've had that discussion before.
Yeah, we have.
Randy just had it beaten in his head, and as I say, I have never said anything negative about Randy at all, but Randy didn't really...
He saved a lot of money.
Oh, marvelous things, but he had it beaten in him to do everything that he did as cheap as he possibly could. And that meant fill a hole with pea gravel and, and the oil and that's good enough, you know it's not good enough and that's why you made the change. Actually, I like on chip seal, we use pea gravel and actually, LTAP will tell you that chip seal ought to be done with fractured rock and ain't gonna be thick, uh, all it should be, not a load of, load of pea gravel dumped on it after you oil it. So, uh, you have got some, uh, work in front of you, but you're, you're, you know that stuff, so I don't have to be telling you that stuff and that's, that's great.
On twelve hundred, we could go back and revisit it now.
Okay.
Perhaps our budget grew, it more like, I think they've already hit it once this year.
Okay.
Uh, 'cause I know we did brush down there.
I just got this Friday.
Yeah, I think that the, is probably, um, those have failed already.
Okay.
In just weeks.
Okay.
So we'll go back with this new stone.
Great.
Um, and I think they'll like it.
Great, appreciate it.
Yeah.
Anything each must?
That's all I got?
Okay. Thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you, Lou.
We got some big shoes to fill there and, uh, not always a, uh, good public to work with, so. You're doing, you're doing good, keep at it. Julie's not here. Chris O'Ryan, um, Dixon Frazier, Joe Clark.
Oh, wow. Good, that sounds quick. I have Bailey Spear with me here today, I think most of you guys have...
Yep, I met Bailey before.
Before.
Thank you. You too.
Before we came to this, we had a meeting with Luke to drop off the inspection reports from this spring, so. Had a really good meeting with him, went through all the stuff, there's a lot of information there and, uh, who knows, there's a lot that he's gotta go through and I think it's gonna be a great relationship and looking, really looking forward to working with Luke.
Okay.
Seeing at least what, uh, maintenance items we can do, try to tackle those things first, but, uh... Bailey, you wanna go ahead and, uh, talk about our ratings here?
Yeah. I need to get through a couple here. So, yeah, I mean, as you can see here, this is just a summary of our inspections and it's right there on the lead behinds too. So we did a hundred sixty-nine, uh, routine inspections and the dates are there. Our compliance month is April, so we did them all in April. Uh, there's three NSTM inspections, which stands for, um, non-redundant steel tension members, so that's the, uh, riverfront flat cars there. Uh, the one special inspection is bridge two thirty-two, that's the, uh, segment of box further on High Bridge Road. And there's one underwater inspection that, um, our subconsultant, that's JCA did as well. And that's bridge five, uh, fifteen there, right at, um, Big Raccoon Creek, right outside the dam there. And then, so we did all those here this year and then our twenty twenty-five upcoming inspections for phase one A, we have thirty-five bridges there and they're listed there, so those are the ones that are in, um, not quite as good condition there.
Are those all non-covered bridges?
Yeah, um, no, there are a few that are covered. I don't know off the top of my head how many there are, but I can...
See, that's a, that's a difficult part for us. Those numbers mean nothing to us, may, may, may a damn, but they don't, you may know where they are, but...
Sure, yeah.
Even the cover bridges, uh, whatever the, those numbers are.
Sure.
Anytime you come, if you would refer to those by name, that would mean something.
Sure, yeah, we can try, but I, I don't have the numbers match. In our inspection report we gave to Luke, we did have the numbers with the names.
Great, that, that helps. Even, even what road they're on, 'cause some roads, when we were going through the bridge closing thing that Saint's trying to make us do, uh, there were some bridges that had numbers, but, and they'd say what road, but some of them were two or three on the same road. So again, it didn't mean anything to us about which one we're talking about.
Yeah, and we have provided a map that we gave with Luke that, that highlights where the cover bridges are and all the bridges are. It's, it's very clear which one is which.
Is that something that could be emailed?
Say it again.
Is that something that could be emailed?
Oh, yes, sir.
Would you send me one?
Yeah, I, I'll definitely do that.
Good.
It's a pretty big file, so sometimes it just depends on how big of a filing.
Or if you could bring it on...
We got a flash drive.
Yeah, bring a flash drive sometime, that'd be great, yeah. 'Cause we get asked, uh, those, those things, uh, we just don't know where those...
The report we gave him, it actually has an interactive map too. So the first page of the report is the map. If you did click on a bridge, it'll jump to that page in the report, so it's quick and easy and stuff.
Alright, good.
Yeah, and so just a summary of some of our, um, new replaced and rehabilitated bridges. Obviously, there's none that's been done. The picture there, I'm sure a lot of you guys recognize it, it's, uh, bridge one ninety-one, Meltzer Cover Bridge, which is kind of been, um, we're just waiting for some permits to get done, but that'll open up here soon.
What, what does soon mean to you? What do you think?
We have got all the plans submitted and as soon as we thought we were gonna be able to bid it, then the, uh, permit agencies came back and said they needed to review it because, um, you know, originally we were...
Split that up, yeah.
Yeah, we were, yeah, so we, the phase two, and then once the permit agencies got word that we were doing that, they wanted to just review it. I wish I could give you a timeframe, but for permit agencies, it could take a week, it could take a month, it could take in the next...
What he's talking about, and for the news media too, so you understand, we had this all set to go. And then, uh, with, with the one contract, one, uh, with the permits for this one, one deal. And then the opportunity for the county to get a hundred thousand dollar grant from DNR came along. Well, we weren't gonna pass up an opportunity for a hundred thousand dollar grant for our taxpayers, but by doing so, we had split it into two phases, the one that had already been done and then the new phases yet to come. So what he's saying is, even though we had the permits before, now they got word that we have actually split it into two phases. So even though it's the same work, same bridge, same things, they wanted to do new permits for the second phase and that's what we, that's what the holdup is now. The reason we have the holdup to begin with and, and when it was done originally, they were going to pin into the, uh, black, to the, uh, concrete piers that were there. But when they began that process, uh, and they were able to use those, there was nothing behind the piers to use. And so that new engineering had to result for that. And then, then we split it up on them again into two phases, so now they gotta get new permits for that. And all that stuff just takes so long, it moves so slowly. My concern is, and Dan would probably know best, is that bridge being damaged by being down in weather all this time?
It has been, uh...
Treatment, treated?
Yes, it's been, uh, Thompson water sealed twice.
Okay, good.
But if the fall rain setting, it's gonna go over the weather, the weather's, uh, is hard on it. Snow, it melts, gets down and cracks, freezes and thalls, starts popping stuff, so. If they don't come up with something before it starts getting cool weather, where it's kinda figuring out what it could, uh, cover it.
Okay.
Cover it until it's, but probably wouldn't hurt, maybe one more coat of Thompson water seal, but... Another thing to, what you was talking about there, I think part of what's changed it too and got, and this would have probably happened, whether you had the DNR grant or not, was before it had a concrete face on it and it, it eroded below it and then it fell and busted the arches. Well, these guys couldn't tell for sure what was behind that concrete, it was a thin layer. Once it was broke off, there was not enough there to drill in, in the new part two. So, that being said, now they have to go down in the stone and cut channels in the stone and drill an epoxy rebar in there to pour all new footers. So by doing that, you're working below the waterline instead of putting a new face on it. And it was gonna get, it was gonna happen once that come off, but there was no way to know exactly what was behind there until that came, until the bridge came off and they pulled that concrete out.
Right, yeah. Yeah, I'm really hopeful that the permit agencies will get it done here soon, 'cause I mean, we're not really doing much work as far as they're concerned, 'cause they're just looking on the environmental part of things, but...
And I know you can't tell me this, but I'll ask you anyway. I mean, I know weather and all those things, once the permits are in place and once you begin process, how long process are we looking at?
As far as constructing it or...
Yes, yes, you ask a good question.
Question for him.
They're probably in two and a half, three months, probably three months worth.
It's gonna take a while to get that abutment.
Yeah, it'll take a little while to get the abutment, or that's the worst part of it.
Right, and gotta let it cure it.
Crank the bridge back on and...
Once people, and, and again to, to the news people, once people, everybody that I've talked to, we get stressed about that bridge that's been sitting there so long, uh, once they understand the causes, they're okay with that. I mean, they know it's nothing anybody's done, you can't think about it, you can't make those permit agencies work any faster. You can't make engineers work any faster, 'cause that's just how it works and, and... So once they understand, they understand, but you, you gotta let them know.
Well, original plan was to like jack it up and do the refacing. Luckily, he went ahead and pulled it off and said, okay, let's go ahead and be excited and be...
Once that broke off, there was nothing there to hold.
Yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong, is it actually the Army Corps Engineers that's...
That was one of the...
Yeah, well, DNR, we have to do the contract through DNR, the rebidding, so they have to review all the contract documents. But, yeah, Army Corps is the one that kinda wanted to look at the historical...
Well, look my part, like, you know anybody there?
My honest opinion is, if it's, if the snow's gonna fly before you guys obtain the permits, then we're gonna have to figure out a way.
Sure.
Us to go.
I think one of the hangups with them was the metal roof thing, they wanted to run that through their historical people.
Right.
But, well, did you see the, I can't remember what there, was it aluminum on there before?
I don't, I don't know if it's aluminum, I can't even, I went out there, my boys are the ones that done it, so I honestly...
I'd have to look back at the pictures.
I got the document and, and had, I had pictures also and I asked them what he recalled and he thought it was metal and they were okay with that one, I told them that as best he recalls, it's metal, so.
I do know...
That's on the plan.
I don't ever remember wood shakes on it, but that might be the route there.
Right. But it's been done on other bridges, I don't know why that would really attempt the historical...
Cause the grant, cause the grant process.
Yeah, right.
That's for sure.
They just wanted to put back what it, what it was.
Right.
Okay, we keep interrupting you, sorry.
No, you're good, you're good.
It's always good questions.
Yes. Okay, so I think we're done with this one, I'll be there. So, yeah, now we're getting to some rating comparisons, I have all these charts here and the lead behinds here too. So we just go through our, um, system here, um, and each of the components that we rate here. We have the, the good, which is the green, uh, the fair, which is the yellow, and the red, which is the poor. And we compare them here, uh, between Park County and the state as well. So as you can see, um...
The deck ratings are on concrete bridges you're talking about?
This is all decks, not just concrete decks.
Even the wooden?
Yeah, even the wooden ones, even whatever other materials could be out there, yeah, this is all gravel.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, yeah, as you can see, there's, um, slightly more in the, um, uh, the poor category and, and the significant more in the fair category there, so. and the significant more in the fair category there, so.
And that statewide is county, just county bridges, and that includes the state ground bridges, so these are just county type bridges.
Yes, yeah.
LTAP just did a really enhanced study on bridge situation in the state. I don't know if you knew that, but you might have access to that. That's really going to be for the legislators, see what they need to put into school. You might want to see by getting access to that, because it's pretty interesting stuff what they had.
The feds also have a website. I just learned that, refresher training that I had to do for three days. And they have like all this data in there, too. They do some really exhaustive research stuff that we can pull data from for comparative reasons and stuff, so yeah, there's, but yeah, we have contacts at LTAP, so I'll make sure we do.
So do these deck ratings, is it done the same way that roads are done, under the PESR ratings? Is there a PESR rating for decks or?
Not really, but there is, there's a rating system, and that's actually going to change next year, because according to the coding guide that we're using now was done back in ninety-five, and it was all a metric that didn't really affect the ratings, but it was still done in metric, which is going to be confusing. But the new, what they call SNBI, is, it's already out, but they're given, the feds are giving states like two or three years to do transition into the new coding stuff. And MDOT, last I heard, they're planning to start transitioning to counties next summer. So with that, it's a little more descriptive on how we come up with what's a poor. So if it's a major defect, and there's a lot of it, then it would be a poor. If you have a major defect, and there's just some of it or very little, then it might be in fair condition. So the ratings, you probably see there's a little bit of change in the ratings, but it's, it'll make it a lot easier for us to determine, okay, what do they want us to call fair, or what do they want us to call poor? So that's going to help in the future, but right now, it's, it's still kind of, you can look at something and say, okay, is that really good? Is that fair, or is it poor? And you can usually pretty well tell when you look at something.
A lot of that deck structure was lamination, right?
Yeah, a lot of that's a lamination. Some of it's spalling on the bottom if you have a deck with beams.
So dragging that surface and doing that lamination, I think that could be an easy fix with our, overall.
Or you could do the epoxy overlays.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, the epoxy is usually if your deck's in good condition. You don't want to do that if it has a lamination, right? So you would do a thin concrete deck overlay on something that's.
That's poor, correct.
Yeah.
How many structures do we have?
Hundred sixty-nine.
Okay.
Not all of those are concrete decks. I don't remember exactly how many concrete decks you have. I've got that number somewhere. I just don't have it.
And that's anything over twenty feet is a?
Yes, yes. Yep, so this next one here, this is a superstructure one, and this is probably one of the more important ones, because your superstructure is obviously your main load carrying member, so think of like your beams and your slabs and stuff. And as you can see, especially in that poor category, it's over double the amount of what the statewide is. And so that can be very concerning, because if you have a lot of, you know, poor superstructures, then you're starting to get your weight limit signs posted and a lot less traffic, and it starts to be more unsafe as well. So this is definitely a big takeaway here from this presentation.
And the other bit concerning is the high number of fair, because eventually that fair goes into the poor category, especially if it doesn't.
Roads, roads exactly the same thing, yeah. We spend all of our time rescuing rather than preserving, so it's tough.
Right.
And yeah, again, this is a substructure one, so there's again, a little over double the, in the poor category. And a lot of these have to do with scour mostly, so it's where your channel has degraded and it's starting to affect your substructure's ability to transfer that load down there. And a lot of them, we talked with Luke here just before this, a lot of this can be solved by just adding riprap at those, those match, designed riprap to take, you know, so they don't just wash out. But a lot of those can be handled there as well.
Okay.
And then your last one is just a culvert summary, so you think of like your aluminum pipes, or your corrugated steel pipes are most of these here, so.
And that's any carrying over less than twenty feet then?
No, so this, the way this is categorized is still a twenty-foot span, but if it's multiple pipes, the gap between your pipes has to be less than half of your.
Diameter of the pipe.
Diameter of the pipe.
Yeah, diameter, yes. Yeah, so there's a few. I know there's one of the bridges that have four pipes in a row that are like five feet, six feet, but since they're all right there, it's classified as a bridge.
So the overall span between the two pipes is over twenty feet, then it's considered a bridge. It's just that culverts basically is if there's fill between your roadway surface and the structure, that's considered a culvert. That's how the feds define it.
Do you have to report on slabs? We have, what, four slabs in the county, five?
If they're over twenty feet, then yes.
Depends on span, yeah, from abutment to abutment.
Yeah. And again, this is just some more lists. So that scour critical bridges, that kind of goes with the poor rating in the substructure there. So there were twenty-five bridges out of the hundred sixty-nine that are considered scour critical. And the main reason that's concerning is because if there's a high, you know, a big storm or a big flood event, those bridges are susceptible to being washed out, and we've gone over the, what's called a scour plane of action with Luke, which is just if a rain event happens that has two point five inches or more fall, then Luke and his department will go out and check those bridges, make sure it's still good, that there's no further scour or undermining or any washout of any sort. So we've, we've got that in place there. But yeah, there are twenty-five bridges there on the scour critical list. And then obviously, the posted load is very high here, too. Now, twenty-one of those bridges, of course, is your cover bridges that will never, those won't ever go off your list unless you bypass them. But still, forty-six point one five percent, I mean, that's a very high percentage of bridges to be loaded posted.
As opposed to being open, yeah?
Well, they're all open, but they're all posted for, or like posted for fifteen tons or something, so it restricts your traffic a little more. And then the closed bridge is just the one Melcher Bridge at the moment, which is obviously being taken care of. And then the inspection frequency there, again, there's thirty-five on the twelve-month list, thirty-five out of your one sixty-nine. So these are, the percentages are a little higher in most categories than the statewide average, I would say, so.
And to be on twelve months, it will have a member, whether it be the deck, super, or sub, that's rated four or less, and that throws it into the.
Yes.
Okay.
And yeah, this is just some more stats for your bridge, bridges. So your bridge length is actually have a higher average bridge length, but your bridge deck width is a lot narrower for most of them, so overall statewide average for the average deck area, you're just a hundred, but a statewide average now. And just some maintenance that we had this last spring here. So this is Bridge thirty-one here. That first picture is shown it before when we did our initial inspection. You can see along the water line there, there are voids in the east abutment, which obviously that affects your load carrying capacity there. And the guys, they really did a great job. They, about, I think that's about two months later, they came in and put a concrete face there, and they lined the channel with riprap as well. So that was one of those bridges before that was scour critical previously, but because they've put this up there, we've done our review and analysis, and that was actually taken off the list.
Great.
Is that Pleasant Valley?
That is, oh my goodness, I drew it on a million times, but I can't remember it now.
See, we always know them by numbers.
I'm feeling better already, see.
It's in the southern part of the county.
I, it's Pleasant Valley, I'm sure it is, where they had, they had the road closed.
Yeah, yeah, we had a file of critical finding because of the depth that was underneath that.
Yeah, so yeah, just stuff like this, it's great for maintenance crews to do. Most of them obviously aren't in this bad a condition, but if they could just put riprap there, that would take a lot off the scour critical list.
Okay.
And this is another one we had. I had a video. I unfortunately couldn't get it in PowerPoint, but the one on the left there, you can't really see it super well, but those two posts there at the end weren't actually bolted into the slab, and the rest of them on both that side and the other side were either loose or spalled off. So I was actually able to grab the post and shake it, and then, I mean, it was really rather concerning, so. But again, the guys came in, and a month later, they reset the guardrail post, reattached it. And again, in the picture, you can't really see it super well, but they didn't, they realigned the post, too, so they didn't put it right on the same spot, so you won't spall off and become loose again. So the guys did a very good job there as well.
And that's probably the two most common issues that we'll find with bridges are scour and bridge rail that's busted. I mean, that's the two biggest things that we see.
And this is just a list, well, the first five of each category for our priority bridges. So we have a list of replacements and rehabilitations, which is based off the unofficial sufficiency rating that it just, I mean, it's kind of how it sounds. The lower your bridge rating, the lower your sufficiency rating is. So that's how we've organized this. And again, we went over this with Luke here before, but those are the bridges that will be needing the most attention here in the next couple of years. Obviously, you can see in the rehabilitations that number four is the Melcher Bridge, so that's going to come off the list very quickly, but it's a decent sized list, so definitely need to be proactive.
Okay.
And we also provide them with a summary of maintenance items here. This is just a sample of the first few there, that these guys can just go out, you know, talking for riprap, log jams. You can read through them if you're really interested, but we provide that with maintenance crews, they can just do.
Okay.
Yeah, he's wanting an Excel file, which we gave him, but he wants to add a column at the end with notes, so we're going to send that to him so that he can make notes to it. And what he can do then is, we have like a column there for date repairs completed and a checkbox, and then they can write that down, and maybe like once a month, send us that info, and then we can update that into the database, and.
As you know.
Makes it so that we're working with him better and helping get things done.
And as you know, we're not even online out there at the Iowa Department with our computers, so sharing, sharing that information is pretty cumbersome to do, but that's changing, so we'll, we'll be.
Okay.
Oh, and we need another, we need one date on it, so we always have the latest version updated as of.
Oh, sure, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we could add that to either the top or the bottom of the date. That's a good idea.
And I think that's what we got. You guys have any questions?
Appreciate it.
Just kind of want to give you an overview of where we're at.
Well, it's always depressing, but we got to know, so.
Well, that's the thing, you got to be proactive and funding like anybody and find creative ways.
All right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, guys. Anybody else have anything for public comments? We do need to settle, schedule an executive session for personnel review, and probably do this as soon as we can. So Bruce and Dan, you guys got any days available this coming week?
State Fair, so I'm pretty, I've been to State Fair, so I'm pretty much available at times.
Okay, I can't do Thursday evening, but I could do Friday during the day. Friday sometime during the day, where?
Uh, not, not first thing in the morning.
Okay. Friday afternoon?
Yeah, I can do Friday afternoon.
Friday afternoon works, yeah? Friday afternoon works, yeah? What time, what time works?
Work around day and dusk.
What works best for you?
After lunch, one thirty. I should be down pulling by then.
Okay, I'll make it two o'clock just to make sure. It won't take that long. Two o'clock then.
Two o'clock Friday.
So we're going to schedule like executive session for two o'clock on this coming Friday. And Susan can send you a sheet, she will, whatever those code numbers are to put into paper, what it pertains to. Nick has those as well. Susan doesn't, I don't think she does.
I do.
Okay. All right. Then with the business, is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I second that.
Oh, pay your salary. And we're adjourned. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.